Anita Straus is at. The vice chairman Darrell. And myself. Everybody get a chance to look at the agenda for tonight? Do we have any, uh, anything we'd like to add or adjust on this? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Approve the agenda. Any discussion? Um, Mr. Howard. There are no discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of the minutes for May 2nd, that's the back page and Monday.
May 2nd?
May 2nd.
Oh.
Yeah. Well, May 2nd.
Two separate.
Yep. We got two separate.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve May 16th, so you got, so somebody has to second that, right?
Well, we're doing the May 2nd one first.
Okay, May 2nd first, okay.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 2nd.
Okay, I have a motion to approve. We have a second one, Daryl. Any discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. All right, now, let's do the workshop minutes for the 16th.
One correction on that, stated by my turn or ordered by this, we have limits that would be tabled until Monday, July 6th, 2022, and actually Wednesday, June, or, no, excuse me, I'm, my problem, I'm thinking July, my problem. Today's date is probably, uh, it's good, that's correct.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve May 16th, now.
All right. Have a motion supported. Supported by Doug Darling. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. We move on to our first citizen's time.
Um, can I just ask that everybody speak up because like Doug, when he was talking about the minutes, I can, I can only like pick out certain words and I had it kind of mixed together, so if everybody could speak up, that would be great, so I can hear you.
Anything else for?
Yeah, so exactly how the, uh, the agenda corrected or something, but I agree.
Yeah, it's, um, under new business. Is there anything else under first citizen's time? All right. Well, then I guess we will move on to unfinished business. Solar ordinance. We were gonna work on this, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and then we didn't. Power outage, what is this? Huh? Power outage? And, so. Did everybody get a chance to review the, what we got? That had the additions and corrections that was, was put in by Doug and myself and Anita from the one a month ago?
Uh, it's got, it's, it's two colors.
Yeah, it was, it was emailed out, it was sent over.
Copy for this, what this has is got the ordinance and with all the changes that was done.
Yeah.
Second, the May 16th.
Right. Yep, not mine, uh.
No. Oh, is it the same as like what, you haven't been at that copy?
No, 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 but I, then, this is where many of the changes have been implemented.
Or, oh, is this on email?
Yeah. Yep.
Tell him to run the copier.
You guys need copies of it?
Yeah, please.
Did Kim take off?
It's got the board for the changes.
Yeah. So if you haven't seen it, then obviously you haven't looked through it and read it either.
It was also posted on the website, I have my copy.
We had made some adjustments, and I thought we had made a pretty firm, uh, progress.
She did, we can't, I'm making a question on, uh, one part of that, now we can go back.
That's fine. Somebody else here? I don't know, wait, the bureau will get his copy.
Yeah, I got a question. Anita had notes from the second, actually, we have the other notes, and I have a couple pages, so. It's one of my questions, we get a first change, uh, use solar over, this is solar over.
We haven't created one, man.
Okay. It's just the, the words that we discussed.
Well, we're in a whole week, and we're going to let you know, Mr. Hernika, the pictures didn't come through on Monday.
Yeah, I didn't look, it was, I saw him send them from his iPhone, so I don't know if that's an issue, that would be the issue, it's not compatible or whatever.
I got a good technical. It's wonderful when it works, but then it's where.
It was like three billion minutes snow.
So that's, and, uh.
But then my wife, she sounds a lot amazing, and the second time they came through.
Okay. Well, he's got 12,000. Did they ever work to extend that room across from the front door?
Absolutely not. We can get to it when we.
Yeah, no, I'm just, we do this every, every meeting, we, we burn unnecessary time because we don't have copies, somebody's not there. So I just was trying to fill my head with something else if you want to use up the space.
Well, well, now we got six minutes remaining, we got nine.
Well, see, and I only had about five at the house.
Probably five and eight tenths between, uh, Tuesday night to last night today.
Better than seven inches of floor.
Yeah.
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 I was in a meeting with a girlfriend down like now, was it St. Luke's, and they had their gas stuff just poured out.
I see though, you said they got four inches up there.
And I thought like, yeah.
No, I see the whole.
Voice is going to be. So, yeah, it's been all the way, but there's been some guys who really needed some rain, they finally got some. It's a blessing.
I was talking to partners up on, uh, between, uh, Chelsea and Dexter, Tom Ford, uh, and Dex and half, and that corn, those, those leaves were cut right up. When it's, it's died. Yeah, corn.
Good thing for show.
All, all this. Come on, how much you want to have? You guys get this time, move up to the table.
That would be nice, nice, yeah.
Would be, wouldn't it?
I have pretty much all the same, so.
Well, we, we work off of this, and then, if, I don't know, it's all done in this, and then we can, we see what it looks like, we can add to it. I guess I didn't. Make sure they had stuff printed. You got your copy ready, right?
Yes, sir.
So we, she has two copies coming.
I think they came over and bought it.
Did you?
Probably only after red.
Right.
I work, uh, Saturday, Sunday, and stop the 10 after 3 on Monday. Stop the 10 after 3 on Monday. Five o'clock, that was Grilling Burger, so I had a hundred two hour weekend is what I had, so. Working plate ketchup on stuff. I had a meeting last night, I got a meeting tonight, I got a meeting tomorrow, then it's Friday, and I play ketchup at home. Wouldn't you get done?
Can understand that, I, I've done something I don't need there, so I, right, we went up north, and we do like that.
I drink color down.
And all six, yeah, that's probably right, it's time to light it up, that's why. All six. I'll take one.
Clear. Thanks.
Doug, do you have extra for the?
Uh, we only print six.
All right. I guess first off, let's, did everybody read through and see the adjustments that we already made, are there any questions about that?
Yeah, I, I do have a question.
Okay.
One of the questions I have, it's on the back page.
Daryl, I know you can see water, but I've heard, um, yeah, that's gotta come, they're down, down, that's, yeah.
Tell them where, now, where? So, um, letter Y. Township review, because of the ever-changing technical capabilities of the photovoltaic alley, solar panels and new technology, the township plan commission shall have the authority to review and consider alternatives in both dimensional and physical requirements in this section as part of the specialty use review process. What does that mean?
That was lifted off the legal means that was, I mean, companies, like for township or when no township, one of them, you could tell it later on the plan commission, if this was written legally. Basically, it's like, if, if I was a company that, let's say it's not solar for anything, if you're saying that you go back and change your site plan after the fact, it makes it hard for new business. But that's exactly what that was, and that's what Jimmy had brought in and talked about, so.
I thought that was in Summerfield, too.
Or, or Summerfield, one of them.
He wasn't faddic, he wanted that added.
Wanted that in there, and that was lifted from that, but for, that's like, let's say your crew goes in and they stay building the building, and they're doing all the blockwork, and then township's circumstances, oh, we got, changes got taller, wider, or something, that, in fact, that's basically what this is essentially, it's the same initiative.
Yeah, well, what I get out of this is, a planning commission 10 years down the road from now, come in and say, you know what, we're gonna waive all the setbacks and everything else, and those 12 foot panels are now 25 foot panels. That's, that's what I understand when I read this.
Okay.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right.
Because that's, you, I, I mean, you're opening, you're, you're opening a gate to anything that you want it to be.
If you want to have that agreed, I am more than comfortable with it.
I, I absolutely.
As a business person, you come up with a business plan, and you're working your way, it's like, if you're playing Monopoly with your kids, you have to play the game, the kids decide to change the rules, well, guess what? What does Chef War want for you?
Well, if, if the kids are coming from next door, and the game's already been going on for five years, and they wanna change, they, they got free reign to change on it.
So you want to.
I, I don't, I don't like that whole paragraph right there. I, I, I mean, you talk about a gray area.
I mean, technically ordinance isn't, so can't change, you can't apply.
Yeah, that.
See, I mean, so.
This is lifted right out of what Summerfield.
Yeah, it was somebody else's, that was Brad Tatters, remember, we had all the discussion of which one was gonna go before, and which one, he kept saying, okay, I can't be correct, we moved it, and that's, we got that in, the whole thing.
Right.
I don't, that's, I, it's okay with me, right there.
That, that right there, I, I don't think you've got a solid ordinance with that.
No.
Because you can do whatever you want, two years, five years, 10 years down the road, that's my thoughts on it.
It also is open to a philosophy to talk.
Leroy, any thoughts? I don't wanna have her from, so I figured out what I asked. No?
Yeah, that could come from Summerfield, I just went back to Summerfield, basically, sure, came, came from Summerfield.
Is that where it came from?
We had Summerfield, oh, Summerfield Monroe, for the team that we had in hand that, like, after, um, 16.
Now, that was created by a guy that, um, yeah, he was, he was not an attorney. I'm not saying attorney didn't have to be, but the, uh, no, I think Summerfield Township was not from this guy, never mind, I went to.
Right here, losing in Summerfield. Like, their words are word. So, no, I'm fine with pulling it out.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I, I think that's way too.
We don't need to vote on that, do we?
Yeah.
Huh?
The whole change, I think there's other change.
Well, we got, yeah.
The word, the lead Y.
We're gonna remove Y. So then, other requirements, our solar energy systems that comply with all federal state accounting requirements becomes the new Y.
That was part of what we already had in, but that was also something that people had at the public hearing. And we did have it already.
Okay. With the other changes in color that we made on the 2nd and the 16th, is there anything else?
Yeah, I think we need to change. I think we need to change holidays and make it like we did with the other ordinances that we created, because in here, it's, uh, I mean, it's not.
Which number was that, I thought we did that.
Yeah, I thought we did too, I mean, somebody, we had the word as same as extraction ordinance, and we decided that it should stand alone and be spelled out.
Yeah.
Because.
Get rid of the word extraction, because that could change, and you didn't want it to be solar, so that's why the word.
What we did, it's, we went back and said it was, the holidays were defined as the township board defined it. We didn't do any definitions. That's what I'm referring to, is in, in our other ordinances, we said, because there was so much discussion, because one ordinance had it one way, and one other had another, so we went through and changed them all, basically saying that the, uh,
No operation.
As defined by the London Township Board, holidays are as defined by.
You are correct, Leroy, we did do that on several.
And that was a resolution from 2021, I think.
Yeah, so I think we should do the same thing.
We should add that?
Yeah.
Under hours of construction, general maintenance? Or make it 20?
So why do we, why do we cross out the hours of operations?
Because we don't want the solar to be tied to extraction or anything else, or not stand on its own, if they are the same.
I, I understand that, but, um, why would we just use the same hours, just, I mean, it would just still be the same.
It is, it is the same.
We said ideology, exactly the same.
You just don't want the words.
No, it's just stand alone, for solar.
I see, yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, makes sense.
You know, that was all.
Let's say, like, back to what Daryl was saying, let's say, 10 years from now, some, something's going on for extraction, or something's going on, and you say, hey, we're going on 24 hours a day, and then you just tie barred that.
Right.
So same way, legislation lands, the last thing you wanna do is just stuff tie barred, and you just hang things up or screws it up.
Then why do they do it?
Cause they do it.
Cause they. They do it every day.
You know the answer.
They do it every day.
So, do you wanna make like a number 20 there that says, uh, also, you know, no hours of construction on the holidays as per viewed by the board, or however you wanna word that?
As defined by.
As defined by the London Township Board. Hours of construction and general maintenance shall also comply.
Put a red on the, put, put that red on the end, after the, the hours of Monday through Friday, Saturday to Sun, and then on Sunday, and must comply with township holiday calendar.
That's fine, that's a good way to do it, too. Must comply.
Township holiday calendar.
Comply with township. Holiday calendar. There, I finished it with less words than I started it, first of all, it was better. So, number 19 now would read, hours of construction and general maintenance will be Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM, Saturday, 7:00 AM till noon, no Sundays, excluding emergencies, and must comply with township holiday calendar.
Or, or should say, no construction on holidays as.
As defined.
As defined by the township calendar, holiday calendar, so that's very helpful, did you read that? Oh, sorry, but I thought you were putting it up in the.
There's a reason I sat between you two, so I'm out.
You're gonna get hurt. Probably, huh?
I mean, I'll see what's the other song.
I've got, I've got something else under 18, right above that, so where we got drainage right there, I didn't see it anywhere else, what I've got written down is, um, I see where it says all drains are to be maintained by an applicant who provided drain tile mitigation plan. What I've got written down, the applicant will provide drain tile mitigation plan along with site plan. Did we discuss that, didn't we discuss that, uh, that drain tile mitigation would be part of the site plan on there? That's what I've got written down.
Yeah, mine has that also.
So this, this is part, this is all requirements for the site plan.
Right, and operation. And they don't know where they're gonna run into drain tile until they're actually doing it, we just wanna make damn sure that they're not responsible to fix it.
Yeah, um, but we, we were talking about the mitigation of it, so after they did hit it, what their, what their plan was on how to fix it or reroute it, um, cause you, like you said, you can't, they don't know where it's exited.
Right.
But.
So all, all current drains have to be maintained.
Because the drain commission will be part of that, but it's the tile that makes the first of the property.
All current drains or all current drainage are to be maintained.
Well, the drain commission only does county drains, but you got private drain on your property.
Yeah, that's you.
That's, but that would be affected years.
I mean, maybe it needs to be wordsmithed some, but I, the, the justice of it was, was that everything would be maintained, they hit one, it's gotta be repaired or replaced, or, you know.
Right, then whatever that mitigation plan is gonna be, when they do, when they do hit one?
Yeah.
It needs to be included into the site plan, is what I understood, so, you know, if I'm on lot X, and I hit a tile, I've got a mitigation plan right here, that I'm gonna go by to fix it, and that's gonna be included into the site plan, that's, that's what I've got written down.
Yeah, and that's kinda how I thought, I think we should go into a little bit more detail, and not only that, like, um, I understand the mitigation of it, but we also need to make sure that after they're gone, that it's put back the proper way, because they might find a way of doing something for them, you know, that'd be fine for the solar, or, or, you know, to be able to put their solar panels on, but after it's gone, and goes back to farmland, then they, we gotta make sure that that's put back the proper way, that it was whatever they must have. You see what I mean?
Or, so you want, you want tile mitigation plan is also part of the recognition plan?
Yeah, yeah, that'd be the proper word.
Well, I think the way they put it in the pylons, I don't know if they're gonna know they hit a great tile.
Well, that's true.
Well, because, well, unfinished, okay, because they drive them in the ground, they don't dig a hole in the plan. So I don't know when they're gonna know they hit a tile.
And that goes back, like what I was just saying, that, you know, I mean, they might have a mitigation if they know that they hit it right then, but we also need to have something in here that says, after they're gone, you go to check it at that point, that it's back fixed at that point.
They'll know, they'll start flooding.
Yeah, there's.
That's the situation, mediation would have to be taken fairly. But, but see, I don't think they're gonna know they hit a tile.
How, how about you just add, we add the word where it says, uh, all drains will be maintained, the applicant will provide a drain, and a drain tile mitigation, so that way, uh, if there's an issue that they've got flooding or something, because let's say the flooding thing traverses over to the neighbor property, which you cannot, you know, put water in.
Can't put water in your neighbor.
And so, and that's, that's under the drain code, so if you put it in there that they've gotta provide a drain, a drainage and drain tile mitigation plan, so that way, drainage, use the word drainage, uh, provide a drainage and drain tile mitigation plan, so that way, you start getting flooding or whatever, then they've gotta address it, you know, if this is something beyond this enact the God.
Well, maybe you add that, and maybe you just add a sentence that says, you know, if it becomes obvious that there's a problem, they're gonna have to be responsible to fix it, I don't know, how do you wordsmith that into something that makes sense?
Sounded like pretty good, uh, verbiage right there, you tear it up, you're fixing it.
Yeah. Well, we know that, you know, I'm sure that that was part of our, our, you know, decommissioning plan, was that it was gonna be put back right down to soil tests and everything, where it was. So I thought we had that covered there, but yeah, so it would be good to fix it. So how you wanna word that to change it? Um, all drains to be maintained, an applicant to provide a drain, a drainage and a drain tile?
Mitigation plan and the mitigation plan will be part of the reclamation process.
And. Drain tile mitigation plan.
Or the reclamation.
What was your other sentence?
Okay, the reclamation process will include a drain. Mitigation plan.
It would be possible to word it where, um, sort of. Drain tile going, I just don't want it to be confusing of the applicant, because if the applicant's getting approved upon a certain parcel, like what I was saying before. Then the drain tile crossover, let's say your field, you guys are all tied in and it affects your drain tile. Um, is there any way we could word this that says that way? Cause right now it could just be, as I understand that it's saying, um, a dr- uh, a mitigation to the plan, drain plan or whatever. How you, how you guys are saying it here, but, um, just something's worth ties in another parcel. Cause I don't want them just to think that they have to. You know, correct that area on your guy, or you know, on that certain parcel. You see what I mean? I just don't know how to word it.
Where to be sure doesn't affect a neighboring parcel, that's not part of the project.
But you see what I'm getting at? I don't know how we could word it that way, but.
Construction will not impact neighboring drains.
Yeah.
Construction or the solar array complete?
I'll just use the word construction. That's any part of the before, during, and after.
Construction.
Okay, I've got that.
Through decommissioning would cover the whole thing. Should not affect neighboring parcels.
Well, I had, the reclamation plan will include a drainage mitigation plan. Construction will not impact neighbor's drainage, neighboring properties drainage. That would cover it, cause then you also got the.
Right, that would cover it.
tile on that stuff is already buried in the drain code.
Right. Yeah, that would cover it.
And if it does? Well, case in point, well, then, then they've got legal recourse and different actions. Now, case in point, because of the mountain land fragmentation that's going on out here now. Where somebody buys a farm, it's split up three different ways, and the one parcel was adjoining the other one to build a house, it cuts the tile. If you want a perfect example of that, is at the corner of Woodaper Mile and Oakville Road, there sits a pond. It can't be farmed. Because all the homes that went in on the rich property cut all the tile, but transverse that pond and, but they didn't realize that till way after the fact and.
Right.
If they, they were unable to do anything. And then the other neighbors will get them access to be able to put a tile in to drain the property.
That always happens.
And then he said, uh, they built a house, dug the basement, didn't realize they cut a, cut an eight inch tile. And came back and the basement was completely flooded.
Yep, that's right.
They had to go around and cut eight inch tile around the, the.
They have a number of people.
Yep. All right, you got that wording the way you wanna read it to us now.
Okay, uh, number eighteen.
Drainage.
Yeah, drainage. Go up here, because all drainage are to be maintained by, and applicant will provide. A drainage and drain tile mitigation plan. The reclamation process will include a drainage mitigation plan. Then it says, the rec, oh, I got that on here. Construction will not impact neighboring properties. Drainage.
We could wordsmith that a little somehow, but I gotta see it.
Okay, the reclamation plan will include a drainage mitigation plan. Construction will not impact neighbors' properties drainage.
I think you're on the right track.
Yeah, cause we got, we had enough problems this one, they put in the phone lines to do repair of phone lines, they're still finding tile. There's, yeah, they're going to have stuff.
All right. We will have to. Have wordsmithed. Anything else on changes we made from before?
Well, you got the, uh, in the first page, uh, solar overlay district. That's, um, highlighted or colored or whatever you wanna call it. That was from your statement back at the.
And there was gonna be one.
Yep, that's what the board wanted, so. However, you wanna figure that out?
Well, we haven't got to that, but yeah, we didn't really go back in.
You know?
Are we done with all the other changes we made on the second and the sixteen? Let's eat this elephant one, one bite at a time. We made a lot of progress in there and. We can announce it.
In that transfer of ownership, what I've got written down is the, the Summerfield, uh, the Summerfield one.
That was, that was.
Yeah, and that was from, what's that?
Yeah, that's the name. Right, and like you said, W, we put it in as W.
Yeah. Yeah, I know Leroy wanted that changed. So, I've got, um. And I don't know from my notes, uh, commercial solar, large solar, uh, define that.
Yeah.
What, what is commercial solar? Is it six panels? Is it eight panels? What is it? Is it a height? Just panels over a height? Whether they're.
I would think the commercial would lend to anybody that's putting them in for a commercial business, so. If I, if I need, we can't put a number on it, cause if I decide I wanna put solar in my side yard, um, for my own personal use. If you had anything over eight panels and I needed twelve, fourteen, so I think commercial should be anything that's exactly that, part of a company project.
So.
In a personal.
And you may not wanna use the term panels, cause panels come in different sizes.
Well, that's true too.
And, and dimensions.
So it's always gotten popped up here until Hill Road already.
So my question to that is. If I run a business out of my house and I've got ten panels out there and I've got a home office and I use those panels. Is that considered commercial?
I would say anything that is making money is commercial.
But that comes back to net metering. So the question is, when you, because I know a veterinarian who wants to put in panels on part of his yard to run his home. It's gonna cost him thirty-two thousand dollars, and even if he's selling back to the net metering, once you recoup the initial cost over how many years? And boy, that one's, that's different. So what it comes back to is if the, the sole purpose is for net metering, then you would say it was commercial. But if it's for running your own home or your own garage, or you'll be, put solar panels on that and run a pump in the field. That's different than if you're selling it back to the grid. And that's, that would be the, the real, one of the main definitions for differentiating. Is it the purpose for selling electricity, not for saving new electricity or saving new costs?
Well, it's, it's.
How many panels you gotta have you sell back to the grid?
I, I'd say any amount.
If it's more than what you use.
Yeah, more than.
A little bit.
Well, when we, when we started this project, we said, this ordinance is going to deal with large solar system.
Large scale solar.
Right.
So we, in some of the ordinances, they covered both small and large. Our, um, my understanding was if you wanna deal with small solar, you create another ordinance.
I agree. I just want you to define large. I want you to define what this is. This is large scale solar. What is large? That's all I, I'm looking for is a definition.
How about a power generating facility or a solar farm? You know, in other words, a, 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 an enterprise dedicated to the.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I thought. That's the difference.
Dedicated to selling.
Not, not merely another enterprise with solar, but a dedicated solar function.
If you run your home office and instead of six panels, you need twelve, but it's still your home office and you own the property.
I'm just looking for a definition.
I don't think that's.
Large scale. I would say anything that sole purpose is to create income from the solar panels would be considered commercial or industrial. If that's the purpose, is to only make money off of it, money.
Any solar array that.
Main's purpose.
That's, purpose is to create re- revenue for the landowner? Or, uh, I mean, you, 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 you're trending a, an odd place, because you've got people with big homes or they, they got a lot of space. I'm just looking to define something, and I'm open to whatever, you know, verbiage you wanna come up with. I just. It goes back to it's the sole purpose for net metering for, for the purp- it's a single purpose, this to sell electricity. Cause you do have some people that have, you know, five acre lot for their, where their home is, and they decide they're gonna put two acres of solar behind it, or three acres of solar. And yeah, it's gonna fund their house, and they'll probably have a backup battery for keeping them powered overnight, but chances are it's gonna be more. And I don't know what the, the wattage is at for the output, but chances are they're gonna be selling back to the grid. But, like I said, they're gonna spend a lot of money, and even with the tax abatements and different things that go on, if you're getting two cents a kilowatt, then. You know, they're selling it out for eleven cents a kilowatt. Takes a long time to put. I, I, I agree. I, I, I'm just looking for a definition.
But whoever's doing that is not sole purpose.
Right, that's not that sole purpose. I, I just wanted to find this so everybody is clear on what a, you know, this ordinance is gonna cover. It's not gonna cover homes. It's not gonna cover that. You know what I mean?
Commercial solar operation.
If you read, uh, at the end of section two, maybe that is, uh, the last line in there might help you define it. Cause it sounds like that's trying to say that these devices are just connected to the single output of the electric energy or other energies.
Right, yeah. It's called, it looks like it's covered.
It has not, it has not. Because if, if you're sharing it, that's, I mean, how can you define that that person is actually? You know?
This is, this, you were together to create a single output which goes into the tile lines for commercial use.
But then he's also, is still not getting what he's saying though, because what would a small solar array?
We're, but I'm, I'm not worried about a small. I just want a definition. I just want a definition for this.
I understand that the, the sole purpose is.
I get it, it's small.
Cause if you wanna get, you start talking square footy.
No, no, I didn't say square footy.
Well, that's, that's where you get into.
See, yeah.
It's basically your sole purpose is to sell electricity. But that's it. It's not part of your home or anything else. It's different.
So, so if somebody just had five solar panels out there and they had nothing hooked to it, and it was just going back to the line, just feeding it back, what would that be?
That would fall under this ordinance.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, I don't think that that would be to be correct.
Or because they didn't wanna wire their house with the thing, so their pet's spending three hundred bucks a month on electricity. And they're selling a hundred bucks worth of electricity back to the grid, so their net cost for their home is not two hundred. So, you know, we're gonna need new definitions for the economics. Yeah, I'm, I'm not worried about that.
Economics.
Yeah, that, well, that's. All I'm worried about is defining what that large solar is, and if you think that, that sentence at the end of number two. With the single output of electrical energy, I mean.
I don't think that's.
If that covers it, I'm good with that.
I disagree. I don't think that that could work. I don't.
Why?
Well, it says utility scale of solar energy system.
To me, that there should be a difference.
Read, read the whole, read the whole section right now to yourself and, and tell me how it gets not covered.
When they say utility scale of solar energy system.
Also greater than one megawatt.
Right. A device, system components generates.
See, it's, it's covered.
It does seem one megawatt, I guess, uh.
Yeah.
It's covered by, that's the only thing you can measure. Maybe, maybe ten years from now, I wouldn't make it out of output, it would be a quarter of the size of the panels today if they quote things. That's really what I have on. You see what I'm saying? So.
Feel like when we were talking, Leroy, like what you mentioned about the pylons, cause we were thinking that, you know, they're gonna dig a hole, put some, uh, put a pile on it.
Oh, no.
They're driving these things like ten feet, fifteen feet, eighteen tent, which makes it easy for the reclamation. They just pull it straight out and it's gone.
So, the only small thing that I would say about this still where don't quite fit is if you look at the flip of the coin, that like, let's say a, um. Like a Chrysler payment, for instance, and they also did need one megawatt, you know, with that, with that, you see what I mean with that word? You, uh, if they needed that much solar to power their plant, you see what I'm getting at? Would now all of a sudden, would they be into a large solar farm? Or would that still be considered like what we were talking about earlier as just a small solar?
It's for the person. I, I'm not worried. If it's.
But you said, I mean, that's why the number.
Yeah, i- if it's a single source and it's going to one place and that one place is to, to grid.
Wherever.
Then, then it's a, it's a, it falls under this ordinance is what I'm saying, yep.
Yeah, that's fine, man.
Okay. Anything else? I mean, we adjusted the height, we covered the buffer screening better, um.
So under the, um, I know that we at one time were talking about the PA one sixteen, if we're gonna have a PA one sixteen, commercial or industrial.
I think that's gonna fall into the, uh, overlay. That will be part of the overlay district.
Well, we need to know that in order to create the overlay, overlay district.
I, I don't think, I mean, if you've got a PA one sixteen that's in an overlay district, I don't think, uh, uh, it doesn't matter what it's, uh.
Because it's already recognized, they got the guidelines in the state. Going around P one sixteen, we're wasting our time wasting our air talking about.
I'm not, uh, I can tell you, I'm not a big fan of, uh, somebody that's got PA one sixteen and turn it into a solar farm. I am not a fan of that. I'm gonna tell you why I'm not a fan of that. Farmers grow food, and I have yet to see somebody eating a solar panel. So when you got a PA one sixteen property, there are certain conditions that come with that. And I believe that, you know, farmers should have every opportunity to make a living if they possibly can. But I don't believe solar panels is part of a one sixteen design when PA one sixteen come about. And I am not in favor of, of a farm that's on PA one sixteen, and I, I'm, I'm just.
One, it's highly probable that if it's in PA one sixteen, it won't go into solar, solar. But the fact that, and I agree, I didn't think solar would ever show up in PA one sixteen, cause it looks like it's construction. But because of actions by the governor and his administration in the direction that the Department of Bank, that's the rule of the land.
That's not the rule of the land. What she said was, what she said was, she's gonna, she's gonna allow.
It's allowed. It's allowing the panel.
Yeah, it is allowing some panels. It doesn't make it the rule of the land.
Don't mean we have. I know, I, I understand that, but for us to see here debated around a township ordinance is a crap point. No, no, that's not, that's not a part of the ordinance. I mean, that's what we're trying to do.
No, it matters to me. We don't even need to address P one sixteen in the ordinance. The guidelines.
If it, if it creates an income.
It's a deed restriction.
So what other farm can you create any kind of revenue? Number one purpose, this to create revenue, direct revenue. What, what part of each farm can you do that with?
One sixteen.
You can't even do it on, even the semi, if you guys take it over past a hundred fifty miles, you guys can't even run farm tags on that because you're creating income. So how can they, how can you say that they could create income on this property, but you can't yourself create direct income on the property?
You're, you've got this thing completely confused. Okay, you pay property taxes on the property you own. You have entered into a lease agree, or a long-term lease agreement easement with the state of Michigan as a conservation easement. It is then a deed restriction that's registered with the county register of deeds, that you cannot build it, you cannot split it, you cannot, for no other use other than open space or agriculture.
It is then a deed restriction that's registered with the county register of deeds that you cannot build it, you cannot split it, you cannot for any other use other than open space or agriculture. Yeah, that's what it is. The action that the governor did back here three years ago caught everybody by surprise, even in the ag industry. But that's what the rules are for the PA one sixteen. This comes back to us, the private property owners, and on the other flip side is any PA one sixteen contract, you can get out of it. You but you're gonna pay seven years penalty on that, so there is a financial penalty on it. But because of where the ag income income is and what where the solar is, it's a moot point. So if you do any from around P one sixteen, they're simply gonna pull it.
It's not a moot point. Oh, if you look at ninety percent of the townships around here, they have, they have exempted. I can show you.
I know, and then it's gonna be challenged in court and down.
Well, not a challenge.
This this township.
They're just gonna pull it out of P one sixteen, you didn't stop it.
Exactly, that's fine. But the big thing is now the the residents are actually gonna collect revenue and they're guaranteed revenue. Because that's the only thing that we can guarantee is property tax. We can guarantee.
Well, back up, you're now you're confusing property tax.
It does give you those commercials from personal property.
You're confusing property tax.
No, I'm not confusing.
Yes, you are. Property tax and personal property tax are two separate things on the same bill. They're completely different.
I agree.
And and they will be paid.
What about commercial?
It doesn't have to be commercial. You're still gonna have the ag, you're gonna have the land assessment.
It can be though.
It's the land assessment and then they have their commercial, your personal property tax, where like I think.
I have a question for you.
It's like three and a half million.
Now, so I have a question, a simple question. If you have a parcel that has is considered a commercial, you have a par- a parcel that's P one sixteen, which one's gonna pay more taxes?
They both pay the same amount of taxes to the township if it's assessed at the same value. They pay.
If they miss.
No, no, wait, listen. I pay, I paid thirty six thousand dollars into three different communities. That all went in and most of that's in P one sixteen. So if my income is so poor, come the end of the year when I'm filing, then you have a tax circuit breaker where you get a reimbursement for a portion. Like I think we got about four thousand dollars out of that deal, so I still netted out, it cost me thirty one thousand dollars for all my farmland. So that's still paid in. Every township still got the full value off that P one sixteen. Whoever's speaking of this BS does not understand.
Okay, well, I guarantee you, if you take Edgart's taxes, Edgart or the Dragway or any of them, and you add up that same amount, they're paying at a higher rate.
It's based on what the assessment is.
Yeah, but it's gonna be based on.
It's based on the assessment. So if you have farmland and you put a solar array on it, that solar array gets assessed.
On your personal.
Yeah, as a personal property tax and then with the agreements, they pay that. That's why Lapeer Township up there where that thing is took in three point four million dollars in the first five years. And it went to the school districts and.
And I guess if it don't matter, then it should be a problem.
Everybody still gets paid. So when you think P one sixteen, that they're not paying property tax, they're paying the state and they'll pull them out. Tell you what.
Okay, then let's just put it under commercial then, let's it matter. They're gonna they're gonna pay your taxes back.
We don't have any.
We don't have any commercials in township.
Well, you can get it.
Yeah.
There is commercial in the township, but then industrial, but industrial. There is industrial too.
Well, Leroy has something.
There's still industrial, isn't there? There is industrial though, isn't there? There's industrial income.
Leroy's trying to talk over here.
I used to be quiet. Why don't you, I hate having to debate him, sit down and talk about P one sixteen. I was back when we started this one mess. Let us talk about it, then at the next meeting, if you don't agree with it, we can.
The only thing, I mean, you the definition.
After the meeting.
I want you guys to show me the definition of what P one sixteen is. That's all you have to show me.
So. That's what I will.
And it's not gonna show income, direct income, I promise.
My other thought is is uh, and this is another thought on the same subject, but separate. If you exclude, if you wanna be like a couple of other townships and say, we can't do this on P one sixteen ground. This is a township that has already paid, I don't care who did it or didn't. But this township has already paid legal fees, been sued several times. And if you take somebody's ability to to do something that makes their business money, that is their personal choice, they've made the payments, they've paid the taxes. You take that away, you open this township up to an incredible liability.
So you're saying all these other townships, all their lawyers misadvised them, all of them? Is that what you're saying?
I I don't know if they were misadvised.
I highly disagree with that. I would say if they looked at the definition of P one sixteen, does not show main purpose of revenue or anything that has to do with commercial.
But when the governor.
We all disagreed that this was to make money. I don't care. That's her own personal opinion. She also said that uh, commercial marijuana is legal, but I don't see you guys jumping and joy over there for that. I mean, but she's saying you can do it. Huh? Yeah, how many brain cells can we lose? Well, I mean, it seems like quite a bit around here.
All right. So are we moving on from this then?
Yeah.
What's the next one we're gonna talk about?
Well, I I do have a question. When we um, in the very first paragraph of our ordinance here. It said after all the dates and times and stuff, it said the townships open ordinance to authorize large solar energy systems as a special use in the agricultural conservation district A one, agricultural reserve district A two. And these standards standards for this use, therefore township board of London Township. I don't even know, in other words, this ordinance starts out defining the actual solar overlay district, which is in those two districts. So I don't understand what the board has probably.
Well, they wanted to trip it back, so it wasn't Ag one and Ag two in the whole township.
But if you if you look at the possible places that they're going, well, the map that they sent to us was basically around the main power lines that go through the township. We only have one main power line goes through the township and it basically goes through the Ag one, Ag two district.
Right.
It doesn't cross the river to get into the other parts of London Township, which is east of Sween River. It's all west of Sween River, except when you get up possibly a little bit at the northern tip of the township. And I I don't even think it comes in, I think it ships over to a violent township about that time, so.
Well, I personally think that the solar overlay district map that we, I wish we'd have never seen. It was it was completely, it was drawn by somebody that I feel had a personal, a personal feeling, he was trying to play God, had nothing to do with. And my problem with creating too small of a solar district is there may be another company in four, five, six years that wants to come to another area. I mean, for Pete's sakes, if we were really gonna give up any kind of ag land for solar overlay, why wouldn't it be up Townsend Road or something, all that damn sand ground?
Townsend Town and there are some residents in that area who are supportive of solar.
You know, so if we create a solar district that looks anything similar to like the farce that we've given once before. I mean, we've completely taken um, a whole another area that if you was thinking about ag output, what we can grow west of the river versus what can be grown along Townsend Road. I mean, there's no comparison. And if you create this overlay district that doesn't say Ag one and Ag two, just creates a, that that you've picked. I said this two years ago, winners and losers. You've said somebody over here that wants to be part of it, that doesn't have a piece of productive ground, can't be part of it, and that is decided by this board. This this commission should not have that kind of authority, I don't feel. So um, that was. So you're so you're right, Leroy, I felt like it was covered and then there was some verbiage came back from the board that they wanted an overlay district. So this red got added in because um, well, I mean, Jim sent it to me, I got two, three emails, texts, all kinds of stuff. Right here's where the board said, you know, we got it, so it got added in there, so. That part of it really frustrates me.
Uh, and Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This, this book right here, that creates winners and losers every single day. Every single day, that book right there, zoning ordinance.
I put my barn in the middle of my property because.
It creates winners and losers every day. And I'm gonna be here tomorrow night over some stuff in this book right here.
Right.
So, you know, I don't have any problem, you know, when you say creates winners and losers. This book does that every single day in the township and has for decades. And it has for decades. I don't, I don't understand.
And some of these rules were written because we've had builders and other folks that could be ruined screw because are no different than used car salesmen sometime, since some of those rules were basically to protect the rest.
And since this is such a new item right here, uh, I can point, you know, a little southeast of here, down towards uh, LaSalle and that here.
Or LaSalle.
Right, here and here. And I I think those protections needed to be in place a little bit more than they were. Lapeer up there, I I think, who owns that? Is the township or the colony or? Right.
So did you go up to that?
No. No, I just wondered who owned it. It wasn't, it wasn't citizens that were living in Ag one or Ag two that okayed that. That was the township or the colony or a municipality that okayed that. Is that correct? So there is a difference in what we have here and what they had there. That's the difference. People live here, they work here, their kids go to school here, they pay taxes here. Up in that municipality, when they done that, an entity, an entity owned that though. An entity owned that and they made their own rules for themselves. That's what they done.
Well, my my opinion is that if you feel that you need an overlay district, I think you need to draw it up and bring it to the next meeting.
Yep.
Whatever you feel is a good overlay district.
I think maybe that's a good idea.
I I'm certainly not qualified to draw up an overlay district and I would uh, uh certainly like to hear an engineer's thoughts on that. Somebody that uh, knows what they're doing when it comes to an overlay district.
Let me ask um, yeah.
Roger, ask Roger.
Yeah, Roger, one question. If I have a solar farm that produces one megawatt, how many acres of land would that be?
One megawatt, you'd need about five to seven acres of land.
So any parcel that would be under around ten acres could probably create a megawatt of power.
Yep, with potential set facts, other things into consideration, ten me- uh, ten acre parcels should be appropriate for a one megawatt, one, uh, excuse me, one megawatt.
So I think that kinda answers your question.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're past that.
No, 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 no. For your overlay district, you have to look at areas that have over ten acres available for a solar array.
I see what you're saying. And and what I'm saying is the township engineer, I guess, would figure a lot more components into that equation other than ten acre parcels. Something that is above my pay grade to do. And that's why we have a township engineer, somebody that is versed in creating uh overlays or zones or what have you, because I'm certainly not.
Okay, well, this board does not authorize to hire the engineer to do that, so I guess you have to take that to the township.
I I can certainly do that.
But that's sweet. The township board feels that they need to pay for somebody to do that for us.
I mean, didn't we have somebody draw it up and it was all messed up and that's the purpose of doing it for.
Dan's apprentice.
I thought it was your son.
Same here, dude.
Wow. Thanks, I appreciate that. I know, handsome. So.
All right. So is that where we're at? I I I think Leroy had a great idea by everybody um, coming to the next meeting with an idea of what you think is solar overlay districts should look like. I mean, we start that.
I thought he just says that we're gonna take it.
I am, I'm taking it to the board.
But I don't think we should have any say because if I own five hundred acres somewhere, I can guarantee I just would have to put that in there. I don't, but I'm just saying, it'd be impartial. I mean, I I think that it should be a third party that has nothing to do with us, that comes and brings it to our decision.
If you all had some ideas and you wrote them down, then we would have a good idea.
And it's gonna have, everybody's gonna put the parcels in there. I mean, it'd be silly not to.
There's seven people here to question.
Right.
That's why we have seven.
I think the engineer should draw some.
I think just straight engineer.
Look, we have engineers do ponds. I'm pretty sure I could draw a pond up. You know what I mean? Absolutely, I could probably get that up the end of that. You know? Tell me there is, tell me there is an information on there for that.
There might be.
But you know, when it comes to something like this, when there's a lot at stake, I'm certainly gonna engage a professional that has experience designing and understanding what's going on with this.
There you go. I'm all for that.
It's too bad, it's too bad Anita's not here tonight because she could report on what she saw at Lapeer. Cause she knows what all of our questions are, she knows what she saw, she knows what questions she asked, and they have her report back to us.
What is her report?
She's she's she went to the Lapeer tour. Did you go? Okay, she did.
Well, I mean, I googled that and that's.
What she saw, what she experienced, what she asked.
Totally different of what we're doing.
Totally similar.
Absolutely totally.
Would you accept the.
Surrounded by commercial business, industrial businesses.
Recommendation for somebody that's been down in the area when that first started?
Global Home Park.
That didn't, that's not quite the way it started.
It started off as a farm though. Like the city buy.
And it's D T O.
And D T O.
It's not split in portions. Totally different.
All right, so you wanna talk about setbacks then? That was second on my list.
That's fine. Our liaison is gonna take back to the board that we want help. With the overlay district and national.
I I got it right there.
I'll send you a text if you let it over.
Can you do that?
Cause we talked about it.
Yeah, we didn't get too much on that. You can talk with them.
No, we did not talk a whole lot about that, no.
You brought up setbacks. I guess it's, to me, it depends on what it goes on. It's gonna be industrial, commercial only, setbacks would be different for residents for Ag one two, but that's my thoughts. But anywhere around Ag one or two, I think nothing less than a thousand foot setbacks is involved.
That's an incredible waste of property.
It's all a waste of property.
Personally, personally, I think the setbacks that we developed and went through two other times already are very respectful for both the property owners and.
This is, we're gonna go, this is the thing. We're gonna go back and forth and argue about this the whole time. Why don't we have a board right here? I think, let's do a vote. I'd say a thousand foot setbacks on Ag one and two, let's take a vote, if it goes that, write it down. Let's get this ordinance done and get it to the board. I mean, what do, what do we?
You're talking about over a quarter mile. You know that you have very few.
Well, then we'll just, let's just put it on industrial and we don't have to worry about.
You can't write an ordinance for daily.
We have industrial.
About the size of a post.
We have industrial. That's all you need.
We get a rezone.
Get a megawatt. Everybody can get it, you can, you can get a rezone.
You do not wanna rezone to an industrial because when they pull those pylons out, whether it's twenty years or forty years from now, it's then industrial. And then you're gonna have other people looking at knocking on the doors and you may have smokestacks, you may have manufacturing, you may have all kinds of other things. Compared to something that's quiet, silent.
You keep saying that, but it's not gonna happen. Just like you're gonna build a suburb, we're gonna build a city water, just like homeowners' rights or landowners' rights, but I don't have any rights to my property. I mean, you keep saying the same old thing out over and over, but it's getting over. I I mean, let's bring it to a vote and vote on it and get it through. As simple as that. As simple as that. And are we gonna sit here and argue back and forth the whole for the next five meetings? I mean, cause we know where you're standing and you know where I'm standing, so.
Do we know what happens if we don't put an effective ordinance together?
What's in?
What do you mean? Does everybody understand what could happen if we don't do an ordinance?
There's seven other townships around us that put it in industrial, like, commercial and industrial and passes it. So you think we're gonna have a problem with that? I doubt it. And I can show you the map.
And those are lawyers that are.
And they're dealing with it and they've already passed it and it's already through. So don't, don't, there's no sympathy about what we're gonna be worried about. That, that's, that's not my problem. They have lawyers to deal with it.
We just give in to everybody.
My opinion is, why are we gonna ruin our country atmosphere and put industrial solar all over? That's my opinion. People move out here for the country, they all move out here to see solar panels.
Thank you.
That's just my opinion.
And I live on the hill, so no matter what kinda stuff you guys wanna come up with, I'm looking right at it. I have a six foot tall fence and I can, I see right over top of it. All it does is keep the dog out, is about all it's good for.
So what are we gonna do? Let's vote on it and get going. I mean, I know where I stand and where Doug stands.
Nothing without a motion.
Well, I make a motion if it, well, let, let's, let's first off, are we gonna make a motion to be an industrial, commercial? Let's do that for ag one and two.
Well, we were gonna wait and have an overlay district put together by a.
But he's kinda getting at like it would help the engineer know where to direct it, which area would be considered more commercial if it went that way or industrial or if it didn't matter and it could also affect the way that he did the overlay. Give him a starting point. I understand we might not have that now, but if we rezone it to commercial, it's not an issue.
Well, guys, I know we need to do something. So if we're gonna take a vote and it's gonna take a majority, if it's a three, three lockup, if it's, then it's not moving forward. If it's four, two, boom, move it forward and make that decision. If it's three, three, you, you might as well however you wanna do it. But I'm not gonna sit here and just be in limbo because I've already been working on this for two years.
That's right.
Uh, I've been working on this for two years and I, I would like to move it forward. I, I'm already taking this, uh, solar overlay back to the, the board next Monday. So however you guys wanna do it, I'm good with. So, there.
You want ag one, ag two, use a commercial, but we have no light industrial. Pull up your map, we don't have any.
There's someone.
No, it's not.
Here's the map.
It's not, it's all commercial. We have no light industrial.
Isn't the drag white considered industrial?
Light industrial, but we don't have any.
What's commercial?
Commercial would be like a sea breeze down there, old zone, and then up here in the middle of Hill Hill and Oakville.
Dragweed's in it back there.
Commercial because.
That's Hell Hill, that's where you were talking about.
Yeah.
Isn't it, isn't that Hell Hill what you were talking about?
No, but it's intersectional. So, in, in, light industrial.
I'm right here, I live right here, so that's why I was like, wait a second, I thought that was on smell.
That's why, you gotta lead the book.
And there's some state laws that you can't really change, I was stuck.
So what, what's, what's our choices here? Because we see, we're still sitting here.
Yep.
Then, why isn't the one right here then? I know Gerard.
And that's gonna play a tension on what the board wants to do. You're still gonna take directions.
It's not commercial.
That's right.
What's that? Is it Gerard's property commercial?
I have no idea.
I thought, well, how was he trying to put a, uh, a, um, a damn, uh, uh, landscaping business there or whatever?
Bushel pit?
What?
Yeah, bushel pit where he's got.
No.
Stone and sand and stuff, yeah, that's what I call it.
Yeah, man, yeah, whatever.
Home occupation.
Yeah. Oh, I thought that, I thought they, I thought they had to switch it to commercial.
No.
Yes, yes.
No, there is no industrial.
There's no industrial.
There's no industrial. So there's a lot of commercials.
So you get a choice of commercial or ag one and ag two?
All right, well, I, I, I'll do it right here. I'll make a motion to only allow solar on commercial.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any additional discussion?
Only that it's gonna take a vote of, it's gonna take four people to get this in here.
Still there? We'll just go down more and.
How many acres?
Limited.
A percent.
We got today.
I don't even think that there's a parcel here that can make one megawatt. The only places are is full of houses and the lake.
Well, anybody can turn away and.
All right.
Bunch of houses.
Well, there's a motion. If there's no more discussion? I have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion?
I think you oughta do a roll call, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, we can do a roll call, well. We'll start with Mr. Darling. One in, go the other.
No?
No? Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Yes? All right, since I'm next in line, I'll go next and I'll say no. You're next.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
It's dead lock. So I'd say, can you take it to the board and?
Absolutely. You, you've got, uh, if you think you can go with the ag one, ag two and I would, I would suggest a motion on that, at least I could take that back to the board and say, hey, look, we got locked on this and we did lock on that, you know, cause that's the only fair thing you got, Mr. Chair, you know what I mean?
And they're the ones that appointed us.
Back, back to the, the motion, see, the motion back in November, then I would move that we allow large solar systems, our large solar systems be allowed on all areas owned ag one, prime conservation, ag two, reserve.
Well, we need to know.
Oh, you're second?
What was that again? I'm sorry, oh, you made a motion to that?
Yeah.
Just like we did in November.
That's what Daryl asked.
Absolutely, I mean, that's what's fair.
Yep. Do I hear a second for Doug's motion? I mean, I can second it, yes. I can do that. Okay, well, go the other direction. On, uh, motion for going back to ag one and ag two land for the solar, um, array district. Um, a yea or nay, Leroy?
Yes.
Yea.
No.
Daryl?
No.
Jim? I'm a yea, I seconded it.
No.
There you go. Did you get what you want, Mr. Liaison?
Well, I think the board got what they would need. At least we, I can take that back and say, hey, look, we took two roll call votes and we would like to engage a, a township engineer for the solar overlay and at least we have moved this forward. Because that's, we, we have beat and beat and beat. That, that, that horse is, is like a, a Shetland pony now. I mean, you guys five years ago.
They're hitting much.
There are great dings that are bigger than this pony.
So, Daryl, basically, you can take this to the board and s- get, have them advise us in a direction to go.
I'm gonna take this to the board and I'm gonna say.
Talking about setbacks or anything till we figure this out.
I, and I'm gonna tell them, I'm gonna say, look, we, we, they, they know how long we've worked on this and I'm gonna tell them, um, we were deadlocked on whether commercial or ag one, ag two, um, we would like to, um, get the, uh, township engineer involved to do the solar overlay and then we can go from there, uh, on whatever overlay that he wants to bring back and that's where we'll work from, from that point on.
I think we should do this with the setbacks also. I mean, cause we're all just gonna just sit here and go back and forth and whatnot.
Jim said this the right thing though. He said the setbacks mattered.
Well, I guess we could do the setbacks for if it is on ag one, ag two and then.
You're, you're still gonna have, you're still gonna come back with that overlay district and you're gonna be able to, look, this is what the engineer come up with for an overlay district. Do you wanna cut this in half? Do you wanna do what? You know, are we gonna adopt the whole thing? So what are we gonna do?
It wouldn't matter about the setbacks if it was on commercial, industrial or ag one, ag two.
It will, because if they, if they switch land from ag one, ag two to the commercial, they still need setbacks.
Yeah, but I feel that, uh, whatever setbacks we come up with should be in whatever it is, it's ag, commercial or industrial. You know, it's still off our, you know, off each parcel, cause you might be a residential person, uh, next to that commercial property, so you shouldn't change on, on that aspect.
So I mean, if, well, we could.
We could do. Yeah, we do.
I'd like to entertain a motion to table this until we get direction from the board.
I, I mean, I just feel like the more direction that we get, the more questions we have now.
I'm gonna make a motion to table this until we get a direction from the board.
I have a motion and I have support, um, to table this until after we get the real direction from the board.
So we get more directions of the board though?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
I think we should be able to do as much as we can for him. So I think that's where I should.
All right.
Where do I unlock?
New business. These people came to visit about that and I think we deserve to get to them.
Yep. Mike, you were part of this conversation. Would you like to bring the board on the speed on? And then, um, yeah, would you be willing to do that for us?
Sure, it, it seems like ag industries, uh, had a miscalculation. This is their story, uh, combined with, uh, the residents' observations. Uh, with the contractor that does their blasting recently and they dropped some boulders in some people's yards.
Has the federal Bureau of Mining and whatnot been notified?
Uh, no.
Has the state OSHA been notified?
No, they have not.
They need to be notified.
Yep, that would be something. I would say it seems like.
That's a huge violation. Somebody's gonna lose their license.
Somebody could lose their life.
Yeah, well.
Well, yeah.
I, I was looking for their pictures. Oh, how big were they? I mean.
About the size of a bushel basket.
Okay.
Which could kill a person.
Bigger than a basket.
Oh, oh, absolutely. So that's why I could pass up the sprayer.
Bureau of Mining is a good, and then you've got OSHA.
Okay.
Michigan OSHA and as they got time, it's like, if, the question is, did ag industries report it themselves? Cause they should have.
They, they, you know, right?
Locking themselves up for fines every day.
Um, you know, this brings up some other things and, and Brian was here in front of us back in, uh, the winter, I believe, or spring.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, that would be winter. Um, a- about the fact that the berm that was supposed to go across from the homestead there where he grew up, I assume, um, was not done properly as well. And, uh, that was brought to our attention and I thought he was gonna get back and the sole purpose for that would be to avoid exactly what, yes?
I thought, I thought the engineer went out there and said that berm was good. Didn't he report that back?
Um, that was an area that was wrong.
No, I thought he reported that back and then. And his thing that he knew for the year.
Oh yeah, I didn't.
He said it was all. So that they don't remove it cause.
Well.
OSHA, mining.
Well, I, I know that, but I, I thought.
So I thought they were gonna add to the inside in order to make it without complaint.
Like ten thousand dollar day fines.
I've looked at it, I mean, you can see it just plain as day.
Notify them of the violations, their safety issue, then that starts a whole weird cup of tea and like I say, whoever they contract.
So I was hoping that by now they would be doing it, cause this is unfortunate and it's not right, but, um.
Well, yeah, they, that's definitely.
Ten grand to them, Doug is.
Right.
I could have swore to this, he sent something back to us. Did he not send his? When he went out and did his inspection and sent that whole letter of everything, is that the berm was fine?
Well, I don't think it's time yet, but he.
See, but the, the berm is done, but see, it's supposed to be. It was supposed to come on down here farther, see? This, this is the top of the berm and it comes back about, it starts to come back toward the road at the driveway and it's supposed to stay out. And so to correct that, I thought they were gonna add to the inside of the berm.
Which, um.
I, I don't know if they started done or not.
Rob, he said that's what they were gonna do and I said, that's fine.
Right.
Um, let's back this up to your, uh, township engineer. I don't even think he went on his office to look out there.
Well, that would surprise me.
So now, did that go over the berm?
Oh yeah.
That was over the berm. So that berm ain't doing no justice either way.
The berm is to control the.
But what I'm saying, where the spot that the berm's messed up, that's not where the rock.
No.
No.
No, this is.
Somewhere else.
It would be over here. He's got.
Yeah, how, how far was that from the property line?
He said it was two.
Really?
Yeah, he said it was two.
Yeah, like I said, that would have almost hit Brian's mom's house.
Yeah.
So what we need to do is make sure that we're aware of this and if they haven't done anything to correct it, when they come back in December for their annual update, we can always tell them that we're gonna pull their permit.
So we can notify them right now. We can notify them right now.
Yeah, that's what they said.
Because they have violated it and it's a safety issue for the community. You can let, you have the.
I'm gonna stop.
Have the attorney write up a letter because of what that was and, you know, they got the pictures and the proof that essentially for their permit, because they have violated for health, safety and welfare of the community with that type of a situation and it's outside of what the, the ordinance and there's the blast ordinance and like I say, that's under federal Bureau of Mining. They, they've got a whole pile of crap that is gonna come down on them like a truck. You know, we talked about my OSHA, then you have the federal guidelines and the federal, uh, fees and, you know, rights that are gonna come down. So, yeah, they're gonna have attorney fees and like I say, whoever they contract for blasting, they're gonna have to come in with a different person because that company's probably gonna lose their license.
Yeah, I mean, well, I too, because, uh, I emailed Rob Hayes about the blast in November. I've been around my whole life and it's driving me. Anyways, he said, yeah, we don't know what happened, we're investigating. So their, their take on it is we'll seek forgiveness rather than.
Well, the same thing as a double blast in that one day. Sorry, it's a mistake. You don't make those mistakes. That, this is like highly regulated blasting. You don't make those mistakes.
They have part of their.
One in Miley, one in the.
It was aggressive.
They're two separate places.
But it doesn't matter, they're not supposed to blast.
But wait, I, I wanna get this clear. This, we've done too much on these, these extraction works. The blast that took place was in their quarry, correct? It wasn't, it's just two different township lines, but it was in their quarry that they had a double blast?
Correct.
Oh, yeah, they probably blasted it down the, and, and.
Okay, so they're doing it on, on two different sides then?
Yeah.
Cause I was concerned, cause if they, let's say they drilled a wall and they blasted and it was delayed, it was some kind of problem, they didn't do it right and then they set off the second one and that's where the second blast. But they're on two different sites, they got different documentation to support that then, but.
Right, but they're not supposed to do that.
So, my point was when the whole special permit was issued for them to do this is that the citizens should be contacted when they come back every year to, cause we're the ones out there that know what's going on. I don't see anybody from township out there policing. I'm still, I've been going round and round with Rob Hayes since that site, or that berm was built. The site plan clearly shows for a ditch to run the whole length and he's trying to give me some runaround like it's in a wetland. We can't do that. It's like, well, how did you build the berm in a wetland? And how are you? So.
But because of this blast and this rock and you have documentation, then you could actually request that the attorney send them a letter that threatening for red tag and that starts the process too, because they have, this violated our ordinance for what we have.
Well, I'll jump on Paul's horse here with, uh, I sent a letter in January. What's been done on any of that? As far as I can tell with, uh, aggravate, nothing.
To the township.
Through the township, because I've tried to rectify all this with Rob Hayes.
Right.
It was far better to just go to the source and I've gotten nowhere. So the policing organization, you guys, we have.
Well, we've been in transition there too. I think Mike's up to speed or getting there.
We, we.
I'm hearing a lot of this for the first time.
We have got, well, yeah, see, this stuff comes before us, but we're not the policing organization either. I mean, honestly, the other day I come back from town and I come that way and I see that gate open and if I had needed to be holding and get somewhere, I was thinking about driving up on that berm and, you know, I'll end up calling my way from Monroe County, cause I'm not supposed to be there or something.
They don't patrol there.
Or get hit by a button. If I had my four wheeler, I certainly would've drove down there, but it's up north, so, um, no, that's interesting, because we did tell them that that needed to be changed. I remember that that letter went, and then, this is exactly the reason why that needs to be changed, as far as I'm concerned, if they don't have this berm extended, it would be, it would be my purview that, that we do not renew their permit next year, and I'd tell them now.
Yeah, you, you.
It's July, let's get this shit done.
This blast issue about concern that you're gonna red tag and pull their permit, that they have sixty days to have their permit.
Exactly what we're trying to protect against, when they've done something that brings it to a head, and, yeah. That's my opinion.
So then, another donor may donate some stones to the township, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Okay, that would be nice if that was along the, the road where the people live that have to deal with the quarry.
Fair enough.
It would be true.
Determine that's true.
Right.
Pass it along or.
Well, that gets, that squeaks a wheel, I think the board, a lot of times, you know, somebody has that figured out, and then they just go to the, the board meeting, and the board member says, oh, okay, that sounds good, because he hasn't really thought about it, because it didn't come to him to be figured out.
Well, I think last year was the first time that the township actually used the stone that had been donated, or whatever, in like two, three, four years, whatever it's been.
They gotta, they gotta coordinate that with the county to, to get it hauled, to get it spread, and I, I.
Because I've lived on that road for over thirty years, and it's never been traffic.
I feel sorry for you sometimes, because that road is just absolutely a business.
It's not traffic, the Dundee Township is great, so it would make perfect sense.
Most of the time, Dundee township is much better.
Rest on it again.
You're on the road court.
Yeah.
You should be on the board at all, you could get your road done.
I'm not the Dundee Township road court.
Well, the road commission started the berman removal on that, and never finished it.
Yeah, they did like a half job, and Edison was there putting poles back to the quarry, and Edison told them not to get out of here, and they never did that.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a canal.
Question, have they been submitting the blasting reports to the building department? Do you have the copy of the, the blast that just took place for that rock that was launched?
I'm sure I do, yeah.
You wanna get that, hang onto that, and send that to Myosha as well?
Okay.
And to Mining.
You might call them and ask them if they notified Myosha.
Yeah.
I will.
After you call Myosha, then you call them and ask them.
Right.
I mean, that way they don't feel obliged, I guess.
What day did you call, hey Paul, what day did you call and notify the township about the rock being out?
I, I was bringing on, fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
Fourth of July.
Okay, and when, when did they blast that, then it was last, the week before, you don't know what?
I don't know, because I was trying to think, I was back in Beans a week or two ago, I'm not sure, I'm not always there when they blast.
Yeah.
Sure.
No, I, I was just kinda curious that, was it last week or the week before, when that?
It's been recent.
Okay.
I'll look at the seismic report and see if there's a.
Yeah. You wanna have that in hand when you call Myosha too, to give the dates when the blast took place.
Remember, I must stress this stuff on that, uh, on release.
What's that?
What else you got?
Uh.
We can talk.
See the chairman.
Okay.
Let's see the list.
Because you got the, the, the rock for the blasting, that you can contact Myosha, but also contacting the attorney, because of that, you know, that, and pull their permit, and then address that berm issue, because that's your weapon gun. Give them maximum days to get, get started or get it done.
Okay.
Just read, read, read over the old extraction orders, because that's what their permit was approved under, which is the five point, or five dash four five, oops, I'm off the page. Blasting starts on four dash four three, but the extraction starts at five dash four one.
Oh, it's in the, yeah, right.
In, in the old book.
It's not the standalone document.
Yeah, no, because that's, that's the new one that was passed finally, completely with last November. Yeah, that, that's, they come in under the.
The old one.
Old one, and that was in twenty sixteen or seventeen.
On, on Dundee, ever?
Yes.
I do not have all my files, so if I had, I, I do have Dundee, ever again.
Do you have a copy of this report?
No.
Do you have this piece of report?
Yeah, sure, I got it in that folder. I saved six months.
Because we talked, we talked about changing that berm, six months ago, yeah. But like he said, he, he's not even aware whether he actually went out there and looked.
Well, that's why I was just wondering if, to look at the report and see.
The way his report was written, he never left the office, he called up Rob.
So you seen the report then?
I have.
Oh, okay.
I have. It's in my aggravate file. And don't get me wrong, they get a letter to mine, they do, all I'm asking is how, what you're supposed to do.
Yep.
Right.
And that's the part, that's the problem with these corporations, headsets.
True. So, probably out here.
Alright.
Can we beat this one up?
Follow. You have, you have another point you wanna bring up, besides the blasting and the berm that's not right?
Yeah, well, it's talked about the condition of one, so with the half-finished berman removal.
Okay.
From the road commission?
Yeah.
You know, actually, and, and, you know, my little strip along there, six hundred foot long, that's almost impossible to mow and do the job, because, I mean, they should peel this much of it off.
No, you're, like you say, it's a canal.
Yeah, because it hasn't been stowed, that road just blows away.
It blows away, it used to be in front of the cow barn, it used to be flat going out of there, and now it's, it's a good footer better. And they've crested it, so they've created two ditches now inside, sort of the other ditches, which on the inside of the berm, so. We made a lot of.
And the dust during the blast, they've, they've done nothing, I mean, they don't even, that's like a joke, I mean, they don't try, even try to control that.
Maybe it's simple, it's just like water areas.
Oh, if you talk to them, that's much more complicated.
Well.
At least, at least for ground level.
Yeah, but the blast, they can only wet the surfaces, they've got the overboard on. Okay, anything else on this subject, guys?
Not the gun spine right this second.
Hmm, in print?
Not the gun spine right this second.
Okay.
Actually, uh, you know, the solar company?
Sure.
I got fifty acres long, uh, township, and it's all same.
Soon, overly comes back out.
Oh, I will add, uh, setback, if the setback for the solar company is any less than what the cement plan is, or any more than that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll be back.
We'll be back.
Any, it should be no less than.
Thousand feet for a solar field compared to three hundred for blasting rocks, I mean, I couldn't appreciate where you're coming from, but.
I think the new ordinance has a deeper.
No, it wasn't a lot different, we're not opening that up now.
It's alright.
We're gonna go on to citizens' comments, number two.
What's that?
Second citizens' time, do we have any comments?
Pinstripe, my own township, the, uh, one of the things you guys might wanna look at, it doesn't apply to you guys, but the Good Neighbor Act that they're trying to promote for this around the, um, solar fields that they're trying to put in, is if it's not running at a certain percentage, they don't have to pay out that Good Neighbor Act. You need to look into that, the lawyer looked into that, and there's another one, if it's so many feet setback from a, a neighbor, X amount of feet, they don't have to also pay out the Good Neighbor Act. It's not fair to the neighbor, a lot of these neighbors that are signing this don't know that. I had a copy of it, took it to a lawyer, had a lawyer look at it.
Where's the copy?
Um, it wasn't my copy, so I had to give it to.
I got a copy, yeah.
Where do I get my Good Neighbor money?
Yeah, I want to see a copy of that, you got Good Neighbor, I got one.
They copy them.
And good.
I don't think there's a free elevator.
That's exactly what I need.
Alright, thanks, guys. Anything else?
Share words there, my own township, Razorville gets passed there, uh, um, with manufacturing five hundred feet setbacks.
Yep.
So, that's why I was thinking about knowing the others, communities around here.
You got my cell in the last email.
Okay.
How everybody's.
I got one more thing.
I think they're one of the only ones that are allowing it, and they.
Right now, Apex is allowing, applicant, I won't use their name, sorry, the applicant is allowing three hundred feet setbacks already right now, as we speak, around neighbors.
Okay. Man, if.
Um, I have a couple of things regarding the solar ordinance, um, Ray said there were a couple times last meeting where I had stepped out, so I may have missed something. However, a couple things that I found comparing, um, the most recent to the previous one, it's not in red or blue, but it's different. Like, um, page four regarding the setbacks, um, number one, it says large solar energy systems must have a setback existence of one hundred feet from all structures. In the previous one, it said seventy-five on the last draft.
Right.
But, again, it's not in red, it's not in blue, that it was a change, I looked in my notes, I couldn't find anything, um, but like I said, I did step out, so I didn't know if it was something that I missed.
I, I think that, I do remember when that got changed ways back, but we've had several draft copies, and so as we go, I try to, let, let's work off the most current draft copy and go from there.
This, this was based off of November, I think.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at, is number one twenty-one compared to this one.
We've done nothing on setbacks.
And then even down further, uh, number four, in the new one, it says, um, when Jason Prowl is participating in a large solar energy system, there shall be minimum setback required for solar arrays on a shared lot line. However, again, that's not colored, but in the previous one, it says there shall be no required setback for solar arrays. So, I'm finding these differences, and I just wanna be sure that the most current ordinance, um, has the correct information that was changed, because again, it wasn't colored, um, whereas the, the things that were added were.
Where was that at again?
Um, if you look in H setbacks, um, if, if you hold it right up against the November twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-one version, number one, it says a hundred feet, and on the, uh, last draft, it said seventy-five, and then number four, it says there shall be a minimum setback required, whereas in the last draft, it says there's no required setbacks. So, again, I'm, I'm just wanting to be sure, was it something I missed, that she just didn't act, you know, she accidentally didn't color it, and I.
Because what she sent out was basically the changes that were done from the May second to the May sixteenth, and that's all this is.
Alright, but they were supposed to be.
I understand that, but it's going off of the twenty-one.
And, and what hers were, yeah, but she missed the, the, that May sixteenth.
Right.
She missed those.
I understand that, but that's what we went, went through with the pond, and it was a nightmare, because we didn't know what got switched, and what didn't, so.
And that's why there is.
I figured out.
What you see for color here is just the May second, May sixteenth.
So, Amanda, to, to answer your question on those setbacks, in the way I envisioned the solar discussion tonight went.
Right.
We're gonna wait till that engineer overlay comes back, and then get into those setbacks, because we started to bring them up, so whatever's in here, or.
Right, and, and I totally get that, but I just wanted to let you know that that is different than what that was.
Right, we appreciate it.
Than the August one, I didn't have my November copy, but I got the August one, and that's where that seventy-five and some of the differences were there, and it's, we've got greater setbacks here than what we had back in August.
Because what I envision, this one right here, is gonna be a line by line, once that overlay comes back, this will be a line by line going over every single thing, and setbacks is gonna be one of them, because we didn't even have that discussion tonight, we haven't met it at all.
Well, another thing that I had noticed, and again, like I said, it could just be on me, because I stepped out, and I missed a decision, um, Jimmy had brought up in the last meeting, looking at my notes, that, about the decommissioning plan, whereas this essentially gives two years, he mentioned like six to twelve months, it was agreed that it was six months, but nothing was changed in this decommissioning paragraph.
Yeah, we did talk about that.
So.
We did talk about it, but we also thought that there's no way, if they decided to decommission it in September, there's no way they could get it done in six months.
We said a year.
Especially not the.
We did, I wrote that down.
I, I ain't got it written down.
But nothing was changed.
So.
So, again, I just, I wanna be sure that I'm, you know, caught up in, you know, all the residents are kinda caught up, and it was transferred correctly, and changes were made correctly, that's all.
Right.
Um, I do wanna say, um, I think it's a great idea to bring the engineer in, I wish it would've been done a lot sooner, because there wouldn't be, he's reminding us that he's been working on it for two years, but, hey.
Plus.
You know, it's, uh, bringing him in now is better than nothing, and I think he will be a huge asset to, to writing this, and I don't think the board would, uh.
Well, I, I think we got it to the, to the driveway, so we're looking for a final piece here, that can.
Yeah, and you guys, you guys did really good tonight, and kudos to everybody, I mean, there was some heated discussion, but I think, I think you guys did really good.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Can we go on to commissioner comment?
I just have one, it's been a long night, I appreciate how much time you guys have spent, but I, I'm running for state representative, my name is Holly Lee, um, live in London Township. Um, part of the reason I'm running is because I've been involved in some of the stuff going on in my own schools, and then some of the stuff going on with some of the solar farm issues in different townships, um, and just feeling like our elected, well, in Lansing, DC, just feeling like our elected officials are not representing what we actually care about, and what our interests are. Um, but I will say that tonight, I actually, you guys renewed that a little bit in me, just, you know, seeing what you guys have been discussing, seeing how you guys are kind of like struggling through some of this stuff, and then helping out with some residents who've had issues, and it was just, it was kind of an unexpected positive thing about tonight, so I just give you guys a lot of credit for that. Uh, but that is why I'm running also, just because I wanna actually go to Lansing and represent our interests, and, and, and actually represent the voters, and not just my own political career and stuff.
Thank you.
You sound like the guy who has a specter.
Commissioner comments, Leroy?
Well, I got some, but probably for another day, I'm still struggling with these ordinances that we passed, that the board hasn't finally taken care of properly. And I need, uh, I need a, a list again on the ones, like the fill ordinance was never approved by the board, and not even published, or maybe it was approved, did not publish.
It was approved back in the November meeting, if they asked me, and I pulled it up, where they voted it's actually in their meeting.
Okay, it wasn't, then it wasn't published, okay?
I represent, I don't think it did.
This is the clerk's responsibility.
I understand, you know, I'm saying, and it said, that's why I've been working on this since January, and I, I have a, a complete document on what we did, and what the board did, and what the board hasn't done.
Right.
So, I can bring this to the.
They sent an email to me on the thing, and I pulled up the actual minutes and the actual times when they did it, and the notices and the whole bit.
Right. If, if I remember correctly, that was a meeting that Mike Tencosi got a little bit out of shape about, uh, the pools and the, that fill ordinance, I think it was the same meeting, do you, do you recall that?
It was at, it was at a board meeting, that, I was, I was, to say, I couldn't remember.
It was a board meeting, yeah.
And then, to, to kind of top it off, the ones that have been published, they can't find the paper that they published.
Does the board have a copy of that?
I mean, he has the copy that I can give.
I had this in my copy, our final copy, I had to scan and send it to.
Oh, I'm talking about this thing here, that explains each one of the ordinances and how they stand.
Oh, okay.
It tells when we did our thing, when we passed the final one, I finally gave.
Been accepted three years and years, can't be accepted anymore.
So. One copy of the four ordinances that, well, it's like the extraction ordinance, uh, reverts back two years.
Well, our clerk was supposed to be here tonight to do our minutes. Well, our clerk was supposed to be here tonight to do our minutes, and she was here and started.
She was in the back room.
So, yeah, I guess we're gonna do all the minutes from Facebook Live. Or maybe she sent me, I, yeah, well, Anita had told me that she could, she could do the minutes from Facebook Live, but Kim was gonna be here to take notes, that is what I was told. I had no reason to, uh, to doubt her, she's on vacation with her family, don't blame her for that. So, and I assume that the board will come up with a name to replace Anita on the planning commission. I know they got some names.
You know more than I do.
So. Okay.
We'll be there.
Thank you, Larry. Leroy.
Larry, Darrell.
Yeah.
Look, what are you thinking of, Dan?
Thank you, Leroy. I apologize, it's been a long.
I'm Dan.
Um, Darrell, you got anything, commissioner comments?
No, I think, I hope we're good.
Jimmy?
I think that the best thing is just to send a lot of this information and we're stuck on the board, try to get some kind of.
Because the board ultimately has a decision on this, so, let's, let's get their input, get a little harder than their input and go from there, move on.
Okay. Anything, commissioner comments?
Uh, I think everybody done a, a really good job tonight for, uh, the amount of time that we've put into this to finally get to that point where we're pushing it up, and we're getting some input from the board, because the board's gonna have to comment now on the, uh, solar overlay and, um, because the planning commission, it, we don't have the, uh, I guess, uh, the amount of people in agreement to come up with a overlay district that is acceptable to everyone.
Solar.
So, hey guys, thanks, I know it's been a long, long journey, but, you know.
Just keep pushing there. On, on a side note, the, uh, what you referenced about the fill, the fill ordinance was passed by the township planning commission back in November. The township, uh, board approved it in December at twenty-one, and it's in the meeting minutes, I was in the meeting notice. And so they got it, I then sent them a copy of it back on June sixteenth when they requested. So when the township needs something, they call me.
Yeah, and thank you for that.
And a di, and a slightly different note, because we've been trying to work on this stuff and we adjusted our schedules, our schedules are rather loaded, cause I've already had a meeting that was in St. Louis this morning, but Zoom, and then it was in Lansing all day and they were here.
It was late.
And so, on that, with that said, the fact that we were having, supposed to have workshops and any of the other meetings and the fact that we're redoing some of this is because somebody doesn't post a meeting notice. That's the clerk's responsibility, bottom line, that's the final person, whether you're talking about neither, whoever. Bottom line is the clerk that's responsible for those things, and Leroy can confirm, cause you get that job. But holy smokes, if we set a meeting date, like if we were to set a, a workshop here tonight, I'm sorry, tomorrow you post it.
Yeah, well.
It's done.
You're right.
You know, cause, cause this is wasted tremendous amount of time.
When it comes to.
Yeah, but it, it's wasting a tremendous amount of time, cause you know, I got meetings scheduled in the middle of next year already.
Right. Well, I'm the last one to go before I ask for a motion to adjourn, and that's part of it. There's, there's two parts to this guy, he's, um, and we all need to be responsible, and, and I get busy too, and I'm sometimes guilty of not pre-gaming and being prepared to answer all the thoughts that might come up, but when we have emails sent to us, we need to be printing them off, we need to be reading them, and we need to be prepared when we get here. We, we spend twenty minutes today getting stuff printed, so that we can go on and.
Yeah, but the thing is, I, my, I can't print a ton of papers at home, I mean, that should be sitting here in a pile for me when I get here.
Well, if that's what you expect, that's fine, but that also can come back on the clerk, so this is the second part.
That's your job, I mean.
And we are not necessarily getting the service that we need from that department.
I'm not gonna go out of my way to take, do her job.
Well, I understand that. You can't, you can't.
I'm not doing it, that's not my job, I should be able to come here.
But you can't say you can be prepared, sit down here in front of it.
Well, you can read it on.
No, I'm reading it on my phone, I'm not printing out. Pulling pages.
I missed my, I missed, I didn't see, I thought it was the same copy that I already had, I, I just overlooked that one. I get a million emails.
Well, Jimmy will, trust me. Yep. So that's all. Other than that, I'm looking for a motion. What's the last motion?
Move to adjourn.
Do I hear a second? Jimmy seconded it. All in favor, say aye. Oppose? Speak up and you might get shot. Meeting adjourned.
If you ban from Facebook, saying that stuff.
I'll have to retire. Yeah, you're gonna be in Facebook jail.